This regular meeting of council from May to ninth is called to order. The first item is the agenda, and I'd like to make a couple amendments. The agenda number one, as late items, we will be putting forward the financial statements. Also, we are eliminating item eight E from the agenda, and we're putting it to the committee of the whole meeting in June.
D.
Eight D.
D.
D as in dollar. Exactly. So may I have a motion to adopt the amended agenda as presented? Counselor Thompson, do I have a second? Counselor Butler? All in favor? So carried. Before I start the meeting this evening, I'd just like to make an announcement that Public Works Day is going to be held on May the 19th from 9:30 to 1:00 p.m. So whoever wishes to attend are more than welcome. Okay. We also have a road closure on Central Avenue and Sixth on the Wednesday? Wednesday? This Wednesday? Tomorrow? Day after tomorrow. From what time? 5:30 in the morning?
Five o'clock till 5:00 p.m.
To 5:00 p.m. Five to five, so we got a 12-hour closure. Anything else? Okay. So moving along now, may I have a motion to adopt the April the 5th special meeting minutes of council as presented? Counselor Ross, Counselor Hammond, all in favor? So carried. Next, may I have a mover to adopt the April 11th committee of the whole meeting minutes as presented? Counselor Crowe, Counselor Hammond, all in favor? So carried. Also, may I have a motion to adopt the April 11th special meeting to go in camera minutes as presented? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Ross, all in favor? So carried. A motion to adopt the April 11th 2016 regular meeting minutes as presented? Counselor Butler, Counselor Hammond, all in favor? So carried. And also a motion to adopt the April 19th special meeting minutes as presented? Counselor Ross, Counselor Thompson, all in favor? So carried. On our registered partitions and delegations, we are, we have Mr. Neil Fletcher joining us this evening from the B.C. Wildlife Federation. Welcome, Mr. Fletcher.
Just like to take a moment to introduce Neil. I'm here as a Graham Watt Engineering Technologist for the city. I've had the pleasure of knowing Neil now, I think it's three, three years. Came here in 2013 to do a wetland keepers workshop. Neil is kind of a wetland, a wetland VIP really in B.C. and across Canada. He's a chair of the Wetland Stewardship Partnership for B.C. He's the B.C. Wildlife Federation Wetland Education Coordinator, which means he comes around to communities like this and helps councils, helps administration, the public, understand the importance of wetlands and how to conserve them. And so I'm really, really pleased to have, you know, someone with a master's in resource management from Southern Fraser University who studies things as an ecologist, but also as a passionate keeper of nature. So without further ado, thanks Neil, and thank you for coming and sharing your perspectives.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Brian. So I just have a presentation I put together today. That's the button, this one here?
The big one.
Big one. Okay. Thank you. So I have a presentation I put together today, and I framed it around Pacha Kucha event, which is from Japan, and it means that you do 20 slides with 20 seconds each. So hopefully it'll be dynamic, it'll be a lot of fun, and we'll get through it really quickly so you can get on to the rest of your business. So, and I might start talking, this slide might advance because I was playing around with that technology, so it might just start pushing ahead without me knowing. So I came here today because I believe there's a decision on the table to talk about Johnson Flats and protecting it into the future, and I think it's a great idea. I got to see the site today. It's a beautiful wetland, it's a cattail marsh with some nice vegetation around the sides, which is a type of swamp. Very healthy to have lots of complexity at these types of wetlands for biodiversity, and will benefit a number of different species. So I think that the fact that Grand Forks is considering standing by this is something that they want to conserve in the long term is a really great win for you. Now my background, really how I got into this was as a youth having access to nature in my backyard, and that's my daughter there. My wife is due with another baby in a week, so hopefully I don't get a call while we're talking. But for me, it's really important that we, you know, to see that for the future, for her, for her benefit. Now, the B.C. Wildlife Federation represents 40,000 members of hunters and anglers around the province. This is Brian Hancock, he's local from here, he's part of the Grand Forks Wildlife Association, and here he is showing me a site where they're doing prescribed burning. But the wetlands program itself was established 20 years ago to raise awareness about the importance of wetlands and to build a capacity among a community of stewards, and we've really blossomed as far as working with local governments and key stakeholders to do this. Now, wetlands have often been this maligned habitat or ecosystem where if it was on your property, it would be considered problematic, there'd be this wet area that you'd need to get rid of. They've been considered wastelands and areas where there hasn't been very much value associated with them. And when we look, we don't have stats for this area that are really great, that show the historical extent of them, but if we look at the Okanagan, you can see that a lot of the pink areas are where wetlands used to be. And what you notice from this is that we develop in a lot of these flat, low-lying areas where wetlands exist. Now, 30 years, or in around the 1930s, there was concern around waterfowl and other species being lost, and here's a local resident who's volunteering his time to work a pump at the Boothman's Oxbow. And I forget his name now.
Brad Siemens.
Brad Siemens, yeah. And so Brad Siemens here, there's people that are volunteering their time basically to restore some of the wetlands that we've lost. But it's not just waterfowl, there's a lot of species that use wetlands for a lot of their life needs. In North America, there's a stat that's about one-third of species at risk require wetlands for a part of their life, even though they often only take up about 4% of the landscape. Flood control is a big thing. I was just in a meeting in Regina and talking about wetlands in the prairies, and Manitoba is adopting a no-net loss of wetlands. They're sort of at the end of a large watershed that there's lots of drainage going on, and so for them, it's really important to have these areas that can, wetlands hold water back on the landscape, and so in Manitoba, they're just getting pummeled basically with lots of water issues from flooding. As far as water quality, wetlands are well-known as these areas that trap nutrients and sediments and clean out the water, so water that leaves a wetland is typically a lot cleaner than when it enters it. Now, as far as Boothman's Oxbow, one of the key benefits that I see is that there's that connection for the public and for youth and others to engage with their environment, something that's close by that you don't need to drive to get to, and that's a huge asset for a community to be able to have an area of solitude, an area of regeneration, especially in our day and age where there's so much technology, kids are plugged in, provincial parks and national parks are seeing lower people visiting them, and it is a major concern. So one of the key benefits I see in being where it is is that the public has access to these areas. There are a ton of values associated with wetlands, so here's just a quick, quick pick of a number of different values that wetlands can provide to society as a whole. And recently, in the Globe and Mail, there was an article that came out that described how we need to start having a bit of a paradigm shift around how we consider wetlands as an asset and integrate them into asset management. A lot of the services that they're providing are for free, and to replace them would cost quite a bit of, quite a bit of money. So our recent involvement with the Kootenays, and Graham had mentioned this, started in 2013 to raise awareness and to get an understanding of where they were at as far as their capacity to do wetland conservation in the area. And in 2003, or 2013, sorry, we started with a wetland keepers course, which is a public workshop, it's hosted for free, and we went to Boothman's Oxbow to take a look at what was there and talk about some of the conservation needs at that site. And this really is an opportunity for us to have people explore wetlands and really open a window into how important they are. In 2014, we had a working group workshop with both municipal government as well as nonprofits, and we talked about gaps and opportunities for wetland conservation in the regional district. There were a few, there were a few staff member there that I was really glad to see, and from that, it was identified that doing more inventory work was really important, to know where the wetlands were, so then we could help prioritize how to protect and conserve them going forward. Now, at that meeting in Regina, there was a lawyer who was present, an environmental lawyer, and she talked about the role that municipalities play when it comes to wetland conservation, and I just thought, when I was thinking about preparing this slide, I thought that she had some really great thoughts around this. So one is that you have the local context here, so you know what your issues are, you know how wetlands may play into your area better than anybody else does. The other thing is that you, you have the ability to affect land use, so you have basically the levers to control land use on the landscape, whereas other levels of government don't necessarily have these types of decision-making tools. And the last is that you can educate, influence, and reflect the citizenry of Grand Forks in this case, and those are, to me, those are really critical pieces that sort of frame the role that municipalities have in being stewards of wetlands. Now, from another environmental lawyer perspective, if you've ever heard of the Green Bylaws Toolkit, it's something that's been developed in B.C. and a lot of other provinces are quite jealous, actually, that they haven't thought of this. There's, these are tools that environmental planners can use to integrate environmental thinking. Now, this might not work for Grand Forks, but her three key, three key things that she gets out of this, you know, 200-page document is, one is to cluster development, two is to increase water flows, and finally, protect natural areas forever. And those are her key ways of thinking about how cities and municipalities need to grow in the future, obviously coming from an urban environment where there's less green space to deal with. But I'm just going to leave you with those thoughts. I think Johnson Flats is a really incredible resource that you have, and I think it's one that has a lot of potential to engage with schoolchildren and the public as a place for refuge for wildlife species as well as for, for the public who are looking for a place of solitude and connection with nature. You have a great team of people that, you know, lots of public involvement, great stewardship groups that can work with you, and I've been really amazed, it's a well-oiled machine in Grand Forks. I've noticed that from the early beginning, there's a lot of really great people here that you can draw from resources. And we're here to provide support where we can, so we are working with the District of Squamish on a larger environmental sensitive area mapping initiative, and so if there's needs from the city of Grand Forks to do work, we can maybe tie into resources to help support that. So thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Do we have any questions?
Yeah, thanks for your presentation and for the work that you do. That's why I think a lot of us live in a small communities, because we do appreciate the love, the nature that surrounds us. I'm just curious about the designation that we're going to be considering tonight, the natural protected area. I'm not too sure of the specifics of that type of zoning, and I was just wondering if you had any information on that.
So I think it, to some degree, it's up to how the staff or the municipality bring it forward for you as far as what's considered allowable within that space. Is this on?
No, just Chris. The big button on the front.
Okay. There we go. No. So it's largely a decision of the municipality and the staff and what they're going to allow in or out of that area. To me, I think it is valuable to have public access to the site because of where it's situated. I think likely even within that, if I could make a recommendation, would be to have some areas that you leave just for wildlife where, let's say somebody's to walk into a wetland. If waterfowl, in particular, if you scare them and they have to fly off, they lose a lot of their energy reserves, but if there's areas where they can sort of tuck in and hide, or there's other areas that are maybe sites where you can view them as well, I think it's doing a bit of a balance. For me, access like at a site like this is really important and something that we'll have to have careful consideration as a, more of an entire management plan. I think so, really, I've done some park planning for B.C. Hydro, and really, you've got to think like a 14-year-old when you're designing this, so even if you put up signs and things like that, you can just expect that kids will get wherever they can, and so visual barriers and things like that would be part of areas you want to keep people from going into, but I think having access and designing that in a well-thought-out way will be really helpful.
Counselor Butler.
Yeah, are there a lot of areas, sorry, when you're finished with your mic, you have to turn it off.
Okay. Oh, sorry, did I turn it off?
Yeah. Took us a while, too. Are there a lot of these areas being designated around Canada, and what are some of the larger ones that you know?
Yeah, good question. So this is, I believe it's a movement towards this type of, these type of designations. The, I'm trying to think now, like, there's, a lot of people are going under these development permit areas, so, but then as far as what cities own, no, there's plenty of them, it's just they might not have that same name or designation, but it would be a park that is managed for, for some of its natural, more natural heritage type of values, so it's not necessarily a, you know, a play structure or something like that, but it's, and an example, I guess, in, from where I live would be Bernaby Lake would be a good example. It's a very large area that has a lot of wetland features, there's trails around it, there's a viewing platform for ducks and things like that, it's one of the larger ones I could think of, but certainly, I could probably think of an example in most, most larger municipalities for sure, and then some smaller ones, they don't necessarily always have the ability to set those aside, or, yeah, they might just, they might just not be there as far as needing to at that point in time. But in a place like this, this wetland is surrounded by residential, and I think it's a good move. I think these types of wetlands are really pretty, and I think there's some of the easier ones, some of the harder ones are ones where there's water that, they don't look as pretty, but they're still very valuable for wildlife, and so those are the ones that are more challenging to communicate to the public that they're worth, worth protecting.
Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. Just a question on, on the impact of range and cattle ranging on, on sensitive areas, and the Guelph and Grasslands being, being one of them. Do you have any comments or recommendations on how we can encourage ranchers with range permits to be more responsible?
Out of the Okanagan, I've been working with another stewardship group who's been putting some fencing around some wetlands, and what they've noticed is within a couple of years, the vegetation can be really, you know, devoid at that site, it could be really plumaged, and cattle can cause a lot of issues at these sensitive areas. Working with the rancher is certainly the best way to go. This person, Bryn White, she's with the South Okanagan Semilcom eatin' Conservation Program. She, she works with ranchers while she's putting in these fences, so then they adopt them as part of their own cattle access strategy or cattle management strategy, and that's been a really critical thing, because if she didn't, they'd likely knock down the fence. There are some solutions for off-watering sites where you can, you can have other areas so the cattle still have their needs met, and there's a, there's a whole bunch of different designs on how that can work. There are some great stewardship groups that are doing some work in this area, and I think if you can identify the areas that are most important to protect and then work with the cattle rancher, especially if it's on crown land, then I think you'll, often there may be a willingness of the cattle rancher to do better management of a site, especially if you're connecting them to the, to the resource owners on the crown land in that case.
Do we have any other questions?
Can I ask a question?
I'm not sure, am I giving a meeting?
At the end of the meeting, can we do that?
If it's pertaining to the subject matter, yes. So may I have a motion to receive the informa, Counselor Ross?
Please.
To receive the information for the presentation from Neil Fletcher on behalf of the B.C. Wildlife Federation Wetlands Education. And Secretary Counselor Hammond, all in favor? So carried. Thank you once again. Very nice presentation. Excellent.
What was that Japanese term you used?
Oh, Pacha Kucha.
Pacha Kucha, we need to do that.
Yes.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the reports, and the first one being my verbal report regarding the Water Rates Committee. I would like council to make a motion forward to dissolve the present water rates committee as it stands until such a time that a new one will be established, a little form of standing committee at that time. Counselor Thompson, do I have a second? Counselor Hammond. Also in that motion, I would like also for staff to prepare some letters of thank you for the members that were on that council, so can thank them and hopefully reestablish connection with them should they be interested in being part of the next water rates committee. Counselor Butler, do you have some?
Oh, you have a discussion on that?
Right.
So I'm just wondering the rationale of why we're dissolving the committee?
One reason, because it's been so-called in limbo for a long period of time, we're not aware anymore if all the members are even still willing to be on it anymore, and at this point in time until the water project is completed, we have no need for it to stay in limbo, so best move is to dissolve it and restart from scratch. So unless there are any other questions, all in favor of the motion? Anyone opposed? Counselor Butler is opposed. Motion is so carried. We will now receive the written reports from council as presented. May I have a mover? Counselor Hammond, Counselor Thompson, all in favor? Counselor Hammond?
Yeah, I'd like to elaborate a little bit on mine since I've had some information. The GFI is coming up, and this is more of a community interest thing I want to talk about. The GFI is our biggest event of the year. It brings in an enormous amount of money into our community every year, and we really need the business community to get on board. With sponsorship, you know, I know that they're having trouble sometimes when they go out to even sell ads for the programs or sponsorship for the event, and some of the businesses say, "Well, the people that come to the tournaments don't spend money in my store." But I think that's a very short-sighted view of what the GFI does for this community. The amount of money that's brought in to Grand Forks in that week stays in Grand Forks for a long period of time. It might give your neighbor's kids a job, you know, it fills up the accommodations, and the restaurants really benefit, but that money recirculates through Grand Forks. So it contributes in an enormous way to our whole business community and our residents. So I talked to Jerry, and I suggested that perhaps they, they could have T-shirts made up in advance, the GFI T-shirts this year, and sell them to the businesses at cost to encourage their staff to wear the gear up for the GFI at least, you know, the week of, a couple of days before. Get people hyped up into this and get the businesses on board. If that's all you can do for your contribution is to buy, you know, T-shirts at cost to support the GFI, but let visitors from out of town know that you support this event, and let the community know that you support this event. So I just think that's an important thing to get out there because it's coming up pretty soon, you know, and we need to start thinking about that now. Another item is that there has been a committee formed for the downtown resurrection of the downtown business association, and also a regional tourism advisory task force has met again, and we'll be having another meeting in two weeks where we have representatives from across the region, from Bridesfield all the way to Christina Lake, working together for a common goal of how do we boost our tourism in this whole valley as one unit and promote it as such. And we're working with Tola, Tola Stridenskoy that we're doing this, we're looking at getting additional funding, and, yeah, I'm just really excited about the way things are going right now, so just wanted to get you up to date on that. Thank you.
Counselor Butler, do you have any?
Yeah. First of all, I'd just like to say I concur with Counselor Hammond, I'm looking forward to the GFI, too, and it would be nice to see some hype in town beforehand, T-shirts are a great idea. In my report this week, I have a notice of motion that I'll be bringing forward at the next regular meeting to do with looking into bacterial or enzyme agents to be used in the sewer ponds. You know, wetlands are a lot more exciting to talk about. These are other wetlands that need taking care of, and this was actually brought to my attention by the Mayor Kimberly when I was at the AKBLG. He said, "Hey, have you heard about this stuff?" And I said, "Yeah, I have." And he said, "Yeah, I've used it myself." He said, "It works really well." And I said, "Well, why aren't more people using it?" And he said, "You know, change is, change comes hard, you know, change is difficult to affect." We didn't talk about it as much as I'd like to, I'd like to contact him again and talk to him about it more, but I think it's an interesting idea to look into. It was something that was brought to council at the beginning of our term, and it could save the city a lot of money, and it could also be a real positive way that we could show that we're innovative in Grand Forks, we could be a leader in this and set an example for other communities. So I think it's something worth striking a committee to look into and see how viable it is for us.
Thank you, Counselor Butler. My recommendation to council would be that we do not strike any more committees, we are on the basis, we have qualified staff that can take care of these type of situations, and under the circumstances right now, I don't think it's recommended that we, that you entertain a committee with members of staff at this particular point in time. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, through you to Counselor Butler. So this is the same product that was presented to council? I forget the gentleman's name, that came a couple of times, so, yeah, so, or is it something similar, or do you need more information on this?
So, yeah, the Mayor Kimberly was speaking about that particular product, but I think in fairness to all businesses in the area, we need to look into all the options that are out there and not just focus on one specific business to get a broader overview of that. And this record- And this recommendation of striking a committee was actually a recommendation that a counselor from Montreal brought to me at the convention. She was in town on other business and she was attending the convention. And she was recommending to me the effectiveness of striking committees on smaller issues like this and how she's done that in her community and it's worked well.
That's acknowledged. That's fine. Montreal is Montreal and we are Grand Forks. So we'll let our staff handle it at first. And if we can't, then we'll take it from there. So my recommendation to council is that we do not strike any more committees. Counselor Ross?
All right, never mind. I've been talking. When I was at the Sustainable Community Convention in Ottawa, they were talking about biological sewage treatment, which was anaerobic and anaerobic, aerobic and slash anaerobic systems. It was still on the experimental stage, you know, hence Montreal emptied something like 25 million tons of sewage directly into the St. Lawrence River. But I think we need to see more data on communities that are actually using it on a broad scale. Biogas, biodigesters are being used. In many, there was a lot of talk about biodigesters and those are actually creating energy sources. And there is a case of that happening in a community within, actually Vancouver. But if we have more empirical data on these products, then maybe it's something we can look at.
I believe the gentleman's name was Mr. Powell, if I'm not wrong, that presented his presentation down at the campfire.
I mean, if it's a really good product, he should be at the SCC convention.
Exactly. And I'm wondering why not more communities have already jumped on this one?
There's nothing there.
Yeah, so.
That's the idea, striking a committee is to look into answering those questions.
Well, if we have, again, air repeating again, that we have qualified staff that can look into that, and we don't need to waste counselors' time and other staff time. Moving along.
That's a notice of motion. I'll be bringing it forward to the next meeting. And I will supply council with the other data from other communities that are using the product. I do have that information.
No. So all in favor of the motion? So carried. Okay, the next item is a report from the RDKB rep, which would be myself. I attended the DDC meeting on May the 3rd here in Grand Forks at the RDKB. And I'll capsulate real fast because otherwise it would be way too lengthy. We had, on the delegations, we had our Chris Moslem from the GF Trail Society in Tennessee Trent. And they were looking at a proposal for the rural dividend grant. And on the trail from between Christina Lake and Grand Forks, a capital upgrade draft was formed. Some of the topics were the paving from Nursery Trestle to White Hill Road and different signage and gravel, hard aggregate on certain parts of the trail. Also, there was another, and by the way, on that issue, up until now, the Area D was proposing to submit committed funds of $100,000 and the MFLNR were committed funds of $100,000. The total project was projected on the draft mode of $358,400. So those are the numbers. So there's still an uncommitted amount. On the other note, we also had a delegation presentation from Matt Crowell from Get in the Loop. Some of you are aware of what that is. For those that aren't, it's an app that you can get on your iPhone, which is for businesses so they can advertise and gain public awareness. It's a good marketing tool for tourism, et cetera. Kathy Wright discussed the chamber's strategic plan, which most of council, I think, are aware. If not, you can get a copy, where they were basically stating they were trying to become financially self-sufficient. On the community chart, Community Futures also had their monthly report. There were various subjects, some including also the important one, which is search for a large animal vet. And ads replaced at the vet schools and the associations. And currently, there are 82 ads listed out there looking for a vet. So there's a large search. Then there was also a discussion around Doug Zorn's letter of support for the ATP Club's B.C. Rural Dividend Funding Application. And that was pretty much it. I have one other note which doesn't relate to the RDKB, which was very pleasant. I received from the, our latest new staff sergeant, Jim Fenske, a monthly RCMP report, which was very nice of him, a quarterly one, which stated all the incidents that have been going on in Grand Forks, Christina Lake, and in rural areas. So it's nice to be kept up to speed. So if any of members of council would like a copy of it, it's available. So having said that, may I have a motion to receive the report from the RDKB rep? Counselor Hammond, Counselor Thompson, all in favor? So carried. We'll move on now to the recommendations from staff for decision. The first would be from our deputy corporate officer in communications, Social Media Policy 207. And the recommendation is council adopts Social Media Policy 207. May I have a motion? Counselor Thompson, a second, Counselor Ross, any discussion, questions? All in favor? So carried. Again, from our deputy corporate officer, subject matter, Rural Dividend Fund, Economic Development. Recommendation is council approves the application to the Rural Dividend Fund for the land development showcase project. And further, that council approves amending the financial plan to fund the city's portion of $10,250 from surplus. May I have a mover on that? Counselor Hammond, Counselor Thompson, discussion, Counselor Butler?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to staff. I'm just wondering how much we've invested in the land showcase so far and what tangible results we're expecting to see from this $20,500 invested? And $10,000 in time?
Where's CEO Martin?
It's $20,000 altogether.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the original land development showcase has netted us approximately close to $700,000 in land sales once we closed on a few deals that we're working on right now. Currently, we've closed on two deals. But on top of that, it's considerable amount of interest to the community as a result of this. The next phase of the land's development showcase is to take it to the next level with the overfunded properties that the city owns, to be able to take them out and market them so we can reduce the burden on our taxpayers to reduce the costs that they have to look after covering weak control and simply no revenue coming in from these properties. The idea behind the program is to take the $10,250 that will be coming from the surplus to fund the cost. On top of that would be $10,000 in in-time work that we would be doing. And that's what we'd be doing as part of our economic development actions as well. So to address the point, the amount that we spent on the original component of it was about $15,000. Now the province has made up to $75 million available. And within that, we're looking at taking the opportunity to expand now that Talis is coming into our community and closing up the fiber optic network, seeking some clean industry within our community, looking at expansion on some development within our community when it comes to some opportunities that will be before council, such as silver cattle, and looking at seeing if they would be interested in expanding and making those processes available. But I'm taking all the land, the land planning and engineering and other components related to this project. So again, it's a comprehensive project, but it'll allow us to have something that's proven to work in our community for economic development, just such as the land development showcase has done. It's proven to be financially successful.
Do I have any other questions? Call any question, all in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Moving on to our chief financial officer, the presentation of the 2015 financial statements. Recommendation is council received a presentation made by our chief financial officer with regard to the 2015 audited financial statements. And further, that council approves accepts the 2015 audited financial statements as required under the community charter. May I have a mover please? Counselor Hammond, Counselor Thompson, any elaborate elaborate on that?
Thank you, worship. I'll just do a brief summary of the financial statements. I won't go into as much depth as I went into today. I'll just give a brief summary of what happened in the year for the public. So the financial statements, the first page, responsibility for financial reporting, just basically says that management's responsible for the preparation of the financial statements. And the auditors, we have an independent audit every year. An independent audit company comes in and looks, and they have agreed that what we have presented for financial statements is what actually happened, so that the financial statements are valid. And that is in their opinion. The first financial data is the consolidated statement of financial position. That's on page four, also known as the balance sheet. So our assets increased slightly from 2014 to 2015, from 10.85 million to 10.966 million. And our liabilities decreased slightly from 6.1 million to 5.9 million. So overall, if we go down a little bit, accumulated surplus has increased. From 2014, we had 32 million in surplus, and in 2015, we have 32 million in surplus. And then it breaks down the surplus. Surplus consists of our operating fund equity, which is what we call the surplus, our unrestricted cash. And we have reserve funds, and we have equity in tangible capital assets for a total of 33 million. The operating fund equity is in 11. We'll refer to that shortly. There's a breakdown of the different funds and where these surpluses in the different funds. So the next one on page five is the consolidated statement of operations, also known as the income statement. You can see in 2015, the first column is the budgeted amount, second column, actual. We came in about $1.5 million under budget for revenues, and that is almost solely due to capital grants. We had hoped for some capital grants for some multi-utility projects. Unfortunately, there were no grants available. We put it in the budget just in case. So we ended up coming in at 12.256 million for revenues. Down to expenditures, we had budgeted 12 million, 12.1 million for expenditures, and we came in at 11.5 million. So about $600,000 lower on expenditures than budgeted. As you can see from the general breakdown, there were some that were a bit over, some that were a bit under, but overall we were $600,000 under in our expenditures. Just to give a little more clarity on the expenditures, public real estate is our facilities. All the facilities the city manages. Protective services is fire and victim services. Transportation is our roads and our equipment. Environmental health is garbage, solid waste, sorry. Public health and welfare is our cemeteries. Recreation and culture is our fee for services that we provide. And parks. And I think most of the others are pretty self-explanatory. Planning and development is showing as over $60,000, and that was due to the gravel pit remediation that we had during the year that totaled $175,000. That we had had a resolution for a budget amendment, which we didn't end up having to do regardless. We managed to absorb it in the current year's budget. So we had $714,966 for an annual surplus. Let's see. Statement of cash flow, I'm not sure that there's... The rest of the notes to the financial statements, they give a lot of detail on the different items, and they are referenced in the first two statements that we just reviewed. I think some notes, number nine is one of the notes that I like to look at on page 12, long-term debt and capital lease obligations. We have four long-term borrow-ins right now. We have a roads parcel tax that has been in place for 19 years. This is the last year that it'll be in. That's General 1863. General number 1887 is the local area service that only affects via property 179. Sewer 1498 is the North Ruckle Sewer. Sewer 1873 is the city park lift station. Note number nine, continued long-term debt and capital lease obligations. You see in 2016, we have $2,697 in leases, lease payments coming out, and those are done. We're done all of our leases in 2016. Tangible capital assets. We have 27,000, or 27 million, sorry, 621,000 in tangible capital assets at the end of 2015. And note 11 is the operating fund surplus, and that breaks down how much surplus is in each of the funds. So in the general operating fund, we increased our surplus by about 578,000. In the electrical utility, we increased it about 22,000. Sewer utility, about 92,000. And the water utility, about 350,000. So we'll be evaluating the surpluses. We're going to try and keep them in the 20%, range in case of emergencies, et cetera. And the rest, we will try and match up with our future capital needs and put them into reserves. We'll address that with council when we start budget deliberations.
Mr. Mayor, that's what we committed to in council this year during the process was, once we identified how much money we were needing in the roadmap to financial sustainability that council adopted, we were going to bring forward the needs from the asset replacements. We're going to be matching the revenues with our expenditures, and that plan will be before council this summer before we move into the budget process. So we're clear on which direction we're going based on the risk analysis, based on the overall needs of the community, based on the risk matrix that we have as our policy to bring that forward. So we'll be bringing that forward to council through a couple workshops this year to be able to talk about matching up the next 10 to 20 years of expenditures based on the revenue projections that we have. So it'll give our community a sense of kind of closures, if you will, in respect to some of the projects that will be coming forward, whether it's road replacements, water line replacements, sewer line replacements. There will be a definitive plan that will be in place that's been, along with the asset management plan, has been a critical piece for us to give surety. So community members in certain areas of the community, when they see, they know when their road will be replaced, or they know when their sewer main will be replaced based on the revenues that we're projecting. So it'll give us a real sense of understanding and transparency in our community, what's going to happen and when it's going to happen.
All right. So back to note 12, reserve continuity. At the beginning of the year, we had $3,655,000 in reserves, and at the end of the year, we have $3,625,000 in reserves. So it decreased slightly $30,000. I believe that's it for the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Sheen. Where's you, Joe?
So, Mr. Mayor, as part of the process for the council, that we want to relay the information back out to the public, the audit that we had by the independent auditor, which is required in the community charter for us to undertake, the appointed auditor came in to determine that everything is in order, and we actually have an exceptional audit this year. When we have money that's remaining in the surplus, if you want to call it that, we keep some of that surplus for cash on hand, and the others now are going to be going into the reserve bylaws for asset management that are before council, that council's worked on this year. So putting that money out, it won't be just be spent on items. It will be spent in accordance to the particular plan that council has in place. So again, it's a real good audit for our organization this year, and it shows that we demonstrated significant fiscal responsibility. So again, to our chief financial officer, I can just see from my perspective reporting back to council that she did an exceptional job this year. So I'm going to take the pass out, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Thompson?
I would like to echo that. I think this is just a marvelous position that we find ourselves in. Thank you, Rock, that job well done.
Yes, and that same comment was echoed by our auditors, that we're at the top of the list as far as well-done job. Thank you.
And transparency.
So unless there's any other questions, I'm calling a question. All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Moving on to our Manager of Development Engineering. Subject matter, financial plan amendment for the pickleball in Grand Forks. Convert one tennis court at Barbara Ann Park into four pickleball courts and resurface the entire compound. Recommendation is that council amends the 2016 financial plan to include the capital cost of $34,556 to be funded by SLIG fund of $7,256, and donations of $27,300 for the conversion of one tennis court at Barbara Ann Park into four pickleball courts and the resurfacing of the entire compound. And further, that council supports the efforts of the pickleball players and their substantial contribution to this project by allowing the use of the pickleball courts for a minimum of 10 hours per week for a period of at least five years. May I have a mover on that, please? Councilor Thompson, a second there. Councilor Butler? Any discussion? Councilor Butler?
Just for clarity to the public, we're not actually spending $34,000 on this. It was money raised by the pickleball association. Our contribution is just over $7,000.
Thank you. So I'm going to call a question. All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Our Manager of Development Engineering. Subject matter, Agricultural Land Commission, ALC, application for subdivision of property legally described as Law 1, District Lot 8382, Plan KAP 88504, Except Plan KAP 89680, located at 6370 12th Street. Recommendation is that council supports the subdivision application and completes the local government report and sends a copy of the resolution to the Agricultural Land Commission. May I have a mover, please? Councilor Ross? Councilor Thompson? Any discussion? Councilor Ross?
Yeah, I think this is a really good example of responsible land use within our city. I like the way that we have two neighbors working together, where one wants to retire from growing food and raising livestock, to the new neighbor who's just moving into our community that wants to take on that task and that role in a really responsible way. And this morning, the gentleman came on behalf of himself and his wife and talked about how he wants to raise organic vegetables, and small-scale livestock, and community garden, and also how they're protecting, it goes down to the river, and how he's protecting the water, the shoreline of the Kettle River from encroachment of, from livestock. And has actually planted trees, and I think it's a really great example of responsible land use, and I'm glad we can support it.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion? Anyone opposed? So carried. Again, to our Manager of Development Engineering. Subject matter, innovative housing development in Grand Forks, small home cluster development in eco/green homes. Recommendation is that council direct staff to further explore the possibility of permitting innovative housing, such as small home, cluster home, and/or eco home developments in Grand Forks. Further, to develop and implement a public engagement process regarding potential options for innovative housing, and also to identify changes necessary to accommodate the innovative housing, including potential amendments to our SCP, Sustainable Community Plan, our zoning bylaw, and any other bylaws or regulations which may be identified. May I have a mover on that, please? Councilor Ross? Councilor Thompson? Any discussion? All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. To our Manager of Development Engineering. Subject matter, protected natural area zoning and dedication of the Johnsons flats wetland. Recommendation is council direct staff to draft the appropriate amendment bylaws, Sustainable Community Plan bylaw, and zoning bylaw to create the protected natural area zone and proceed with the statutory requirements for amending bylaws. Also, to draft an amendment to rezone property legally described as District Lot 382, Plan KAP 4892B, and owned by the City of Grand Forks from current R4 rural residential zone to protected natural area zone, and to prepare referral request packages and initial public outreach. May I have a mover, please? Councilor Thompson? Councilor Hammett? Discussion, Councilor Butler?
Through you, Mr. Mayor of Staff. I'm just wondering what referral request packages are.
Anytime we make any amendments to the zoning bylaw or the SCP, part of the legislative process is that we have to send out referral packages. So basically, it's an information package to, in this case, would be within 30, I believe it's 30 meters, 100 feet of the property boundary to all the, basically, it's the surrounding property owners.
Right.
Councilor Butler?
Yes, so just a follow-up to that. I'm wondering, are there going, we don't really know what this natural protected area zone is going to entail at the moment. So I'm a little nervous about recommending we rezone something without it coming back to council first to say what this zone actually entails. To leave it open-ended kind of bothers me, because I don't want something to be put on homeowners in that area that we're not aware of. I think it'd be nice if council knew what the zoning entailed, so that when these packages are sent out to homeowners, they're aware of how this might affect them. And I'm just wondering, are there going to be any effects to the homeowners in that area?
To our CEO and to Councilor Thompson, but I believe the identification was the name.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. So prior to a bylaw being, and information being sent out, we have to bring the bylaw back to council for the first readings, and then council then, once you've done that. Typically, in a development process, we do the first two readings, and then we send the information package out. Should there be comments coming back from those property owners or different ministries, for instance, for within 800 meters of the Ministry of Transportation in the highway, they can provide comments back that would change that process in that bylaw. So before we get the third reading of the bylaw, we would want to have all that information. We'd ask you for the first two readings to trigger the process, and then we can move through that process. Should we get some feedback from the public that is, you know, that makes sense, is less than desirable for some, for whatever reason, or for another ministry, then we could proceed on changing those processes. But if we're just simply moving forward down the process, and we might get kickbacks from somebody that says, "I don't want that in my backyard," then that'll be before council to say they accepted or choose to, or disregard the comment. So it will be before council. So we'll develop and draft a bylaw, which will have the terms in it, and that will be before council to consider. So the points that Councilor Butler raised will be identified in that bylaw.
So that's all the present information is in?
Yes.
Councilor Thompson, then Councilor Butler?
Yeah, my read of this resolution is just this direction is all encompassing. And, you know, staff isn't going to be preparing any referral packages at the moment. It's going to be contingent on the bylaw. So this is just, this is just the process, and it doesn't have to keep coming back for authorization. So that's my understanding.
Councilor Butler?
So, this is something that staff has obviously looked into, to be able to suggest a natural area zoning. So I'm just wondering if they foresee any issues that might arise with homeowners in the area?
To our CEO?
Mr. Mayor, the easiest solution for us would have been to register a covenant on title, but we thought we'd go about it this way. If council decided they wanted to just simply do that, it would be a covenant. I don't foresee any downside to this, other than, you know, somebody that doesn't want to have restrictions, that they don't want it to be raised in higher profile in the public, that potentially sees it as an impact on their property. But I, everything that we heard today from Mr. Fletcher was pointing about the positives associated with it. We talked about protecting it forever, and that's what this is meant to do, is protect us forever as a natural asset for the community. So, I anticipate that there will be something coming back, because every time that I think we've done all of our homework, there's always something that comes back to us, and that will come before council. And that's all I can say at this point. I don't know what to anticipate, but I do anticipate there should be something, because nothing's been smoothed.
What I'm thinking of is, there's people in that area that have horses and livestock, and is there going to be restrictions placed on them as to how they can have livestock in that area with manure runoff into the, is that something that's happened in other areas where this type of zoning has been introduced? Because there's a lot of farming in that area.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, the idea is protect the city land, so it's only the city component. The neighbors in the area, the education piece will be developing over the next many decades. The information will continue to educate and develop in the area, and I think people's understanding and why we're protecting will become more prevalent over the next, like I said, decades. This is just the initial step forward for our community. So Councilor Butler's points are, yes, there could be, but because it's city-owned land, we wouldn't expect that a horse or livestock would be going into city-owned land and having an effect on an environmentally sensitive area. And if there is, we're going to have to work with that person to help them understand the effects of that, because like Mr. Fletcher pointed out, this is, this is a piece of education and development over time. So, we're very much at the infancy of this in our, in our community. This is something that, we know that the Oxfam, Boothman's Oxfam is something that has been worked on, but within our city limits, this is something that's relatively new for us. So, we have an incredibly talented group of volunteers in our community that have been working on this, from an education perspective, and we're expecting that to continue on.
So I'm going to call a question. All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Moving on to our Manager of Development Engineering. Again, the subject matter is the Municipal Natural Capital Initiative Letter of Intent. The recommendation is that council direct staff to proceed with developing a letter of intent and drafting a memorandum of understanding with the Municipal Natural Capital Initiative and the Regional District of Cooten boundary for participation in the Phase Two pilot project. May I have a mover? Councilor Thompson? Councilor Hammett? Any discussion? Councilor Thompson?
I am really excited that Grand Forks is one of five municipalities in Canada that has been selected to participate in this project. Job well, well, well done, staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor Thompson. Councilor Butler?
Yeah, I agree. On the surface, this looks like a great opportunity, but having dug a bit deeper into the initiative, it's something that's going to be quite costly for us in the long run. The initial investment is another $10,000 budget amendment, which there's many of those on our agenda tonight. Those are tax increases for the public, and I don't see this wetland as being endangered at the moment. I think rezoning, and education, and steps we can take locally are quite enough to protect it. In the long run, as we keep investing money into these type of initiatives, it will result in increases for our water rates, because these ecosystems are seen as being part of our watershed, and protecting our watershed is going to be part of our water rates that are going to steadily increase in this town, which is a concern for people like myself that like to grow gardens and like to produce their own food. If we outprice water in this town, we're going to see a decrease in our farming. So initiatives like this at the onset, although they might look good, I'm concerned in the long run, they're going to be extremely expensive for the taxpayer.
Any other questions, or concern? To our Manager?
It's somewhat verified, but this isn't about Johnsons flats. This is Johnsons flats just having a big wetland. This is about protection of our aquifer, other wetlands and other ecosystems.
More generalized?
Yeah, it's a general.
Yeah, I'm America.
Councilor Croker?
Yeah, I can't make that far of a, or large of a connection between municipal water rates and a project. This is to help us gather data, this is to help us protect our aquifer. So, and another statement is that water rates are increasing. Water rates will always increase. Nothing on this planet is really going to decrease in price over the next few years. Doing this does not mean that we're looking at trying to value things or monetize them so they can be sold, or somebody could come in and, you know, it's to benefit the residents of the community, and the outlay of, and something is minimal compared to what we are at each resident, basically, will receive from this.
Councilor Butler?
Yeah, I mean, as I've said before, I mean, I brought this up with council over the last year, and Gibson's is one of the pilot communities that's been doing this. In a five-minute search on the Gibson's website, you'll see how much their water rates have increased because of the public education that they do, and the other things that they're doing to protect their aquifer. It's increased their water rates exponentially. So it's not something I'm pulling out of the air, it's not that I have huge foresight, it's just that I've done my homework and my research on this, and I've seen it happen already in the communities that are involved. So I know that's what's going to happen here. I told you this last year in my report, and now it's happening.
Councilor Thompson, then Councilor Hammett?
Well, my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, to our staff, my understanding is that the water rates in Gibson's were substantially lower than not paying for the service. And so, yes, they did increase, as they should have, so that the utility service was sustainable.
Councilor Hammett?
I also believe that the residents of the community of Gibson's voted for an increase, and they were happy to pay it. Theirs is a pilot project that's been very successful, and that's what's leading this whole thing throughout the province. So, I'm quite happy with the presentation and the fact that we've been one of five communities selected across Canada. I think that we should be proud that we have.
Councilor Ross?
I don't think it's fair to scare people, Mayor Conrad, in believing that they can't grow their own food, and why we care about water. You can grow a lot of food with very little water. We need to start, and I believe the city is going to do that, putting out education, little ideas around how we can grow abundant food with very little water, using trickle irrigation, mulching. We don't have to water every day, don't leave water even every other day. There are benefits to growing really good nutrient-dense food with very little water. And it's been done all over the world, very successfully, in peasant communities. We just have, we've had abundance, and we've gotten used to abundance, and we have a sense of entitlement. And I really believe that we need to re-educate ourselves and reprogram ourselves to start reducing the amount of water that we use. Whether we're not nature or not, I don't think is really relevant here. I think the point is, is that we can do it, and we should do it. And so I think it's, you know, I was encouraged, Councilor Butler, to think more creatively, which is fun, on how, in this coming growing season, which is actually upon us, how we can all grow wonderful gardens with flowers and vegetables with using a lot less water. I'm really appalled at how much water we're using to grow vegetables and flowers, and lots.
And in regards to this pilot project, unless I'm totally incorrect on the information, should it not suit our requirements? We can disembark from the project at any given point in time, so we are not committed to perpetuity on this. To our CEO, Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think one of the keys to this project is it's a partnership piece with the Regional District. One of the spearheads of this project was Director Rowley Russell, who approached our council about participating in this and sought the, sought the participation. Our council saw it as an initiative, as an opportunity, and it's before council now. I think Mr. Johnson, that's Johnson this morning, at the committee, the whole summarized it the best, is saying that, you know, it may appear on the surface that we're trying to commod, not commodify, but put a value to the asset, but, you know, if there ever was a problem with the asset that somebody else caused, and we had to go back after to be able to try to recuperate costs, we would have a value of that asset. We're not looking at saying that the assets have devalue, but what is the value if we have to replace it? What would be the value, what would be the impact to our community if we lost our aquifer, and we now had to put in a water treatment plant on our river system? And how would that look during drought conditions in the future, as we reached into it last year? What would be the ecological impacts? be the ecological impacts of removing the water from the river during the worst drought scenarios, and would we have water? And what would it look like for us for a water treatment plant to be built in our community? And that's just one analysis of this. When we look at ditches, we look at streams, we look at swamps, we look at areas in our community that are traditionally, you know, considered to be places where you might find some additional garbage or some wood lying there that just simply looks unsightly, but understanding and educating ourselves around these pieces and what type of value do they bring to our community. So again, I think it's a broadening and awareness piece for us. This is, again, we're one of the five communities in Canada that are gonna be participating in this, so it's all gonna be relatively new. And like the mayor said, if we decide, if council decides they want to disembark from this process, you can step off. And the $5,000 will be coming from the regional district, and $5,000 will be coming from the city. So again, it is a partnership, and it is part one of council's strategic priorities, to partner with the regional district on different initiatives, and this is why it's before council.
Also, it's very appreciative that we have the realization where our assets are worth, for one, and the collaborative effort that we are now starting to do with our regional partners, I think is very, very good, to realize that we're on the same wavelength and going down the same path.
Counselor Thompson?
Just one other comment, and that is that I know we've gone back to stage one watering restrictions, and I would really wish that we had, that we had stayed with stage two, because I certainly support what Counselor Ross has said, and she's, she knows. She's been farming for well over 30 years, that you can do all of these things with a lot less water. And, but it's unfortunate, the decision has been made, and I will support council on it.
Counselor Butler?
For those of us that have driven through the Rock Creek area, we've seen that the houses that survived the fire were the houses that had lush greenery around them. And with the fires that we're seeing all around us these days, the fires in Fort McMurray, I think it's a smart idea for our community to not dry up, not go brown, and not look ugly when people drive through. And in the interest of protecting our properties in this fire season, I hope that we would be allowed to keep our trees alive and to keep some greenery in our yards, so that when falling embers come down, we don't have fires starting in our community.
Counselor Crook?
I haven't spoken a lot, so. I've been advised to be quiet, so I'm just gonna, just unleash. No, anything is possible, but certain things may be probable. Again, the concept of fear, right? That, well, when the fires hit us, oh, look at the fires over here, we went through. Pretty impressive for us, for Fort Mac, they probably think, oh, I just wish we were there, right? Because they got hit a lot worse than we did. And when it comes to water restrictions, this is not going to go away. Climates are changing, it's gonna get worse. We need to get on board and try and do whatever we can to prevent it, but to say something like this is, or sorry, we did get off topic with the water rate sign-off, or sorry, off sprinkling regulation, sign-off topic as well. But, yeah, we can't scare people for no reason, when it's, it's probably never, ever gonna happen.
And if it does, it's inevitable, by the way. Okay, I'm calling the question. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Counselor Butler is opposed. So carried. Moving on to our manager of operations, one subject, electric vehicle purchase. The recommendation is council approves amending the 2016 financial plan from the Equipment Replacement Fund to include the additional cost of up to $15,000 for the purchase of a Mighty Truck. Sounds like a Thompson. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in 2015, we looked at replacing a 20-year-old pickup of our city fleet. So we were gonna take, currently the, or at the time, the manager of operations pickup, put that into the fleet and buy a vehicle. We went out for pricing, and when the pricing came back, we thought that it would be a great opportunity to look at council's strategic plan and possibly look at electric vehicle. So we went out for RFP, for RFQ, for quotes on electric car. We came back to council the summer of 2015 with the quotes being around $45,000 to outfit for an electric car. At the time, council decided to defer this to this year. So we went out and we had a meeting at Public Works, because we had the carry-forward that was approved for $30,000 in the budget to replace the 20-year-old pickup. So we went, had a meeting at Public Works, and we talked about, you know, just where we were headed with the electric vehicles and the strategic priorities with the council. Public Works decided that the best bang for the dollar was not to buy the one vehicle for the manager or whatever, it was to incorporate the electric vehicles into the fleet. So it was Public Works' choice to not buy a car or an SUV or anything like that. It was to buy an electric truck, because that had the biggest ability to change, you know, our carbon footprint out there, so.
So which vehicle is it?
We put a few different options, because there are quite a few different makes. We were looking at just the pickup with the dump box, but they do have service bodies, and there's garbage collection ones, and you can put tanks on them. And there's quite a few communities around that are starting to go with the little electric vehicles, or the pickups, because they are smaller than a regular pickup.
And I believe they're Canadian-made, right on the coast?
Correct, in Parksville.
So you're not asking council to choose the truck that you originally have?
I want a red one.
And if we approach this, we get the right engine first.
Yeah.
In the dump box, yeah.
Girdge.
So we're here in front of council today to say that we had $30,000 allotted for a vehicle replacement, but to get an electric pickup truck such as the Mighty Truck, we would need to allocate $45,000, and then there is possible rebates and that to come back, but we would need the initial 45 to get into that.
But you'll make the choice.
Correct.
Is it a new vehicle?
Yes.
Counselor Ross?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Although I'll be the first person to say I'm all about, you know, environmentally friendly vehicles as opposed to internal combustion engines. Okay, so I feel like I have my teenager coming to me saying, well, mom, that was great, but I need a bit more. And because, is this vehicle actually has the capacity, and is it rugged enough? It looks like it has really small tires. Is it rugged enough to do the job that you need it to do? Like, it's replacing a pickup. We all know what pickups can do, and they go on the highway and they can drive 100 kilometers an hour. This can't. So it's not really replacing the pickup. It's not doing, is it really? Is it? Because it doesn't, from what I'm reading here, it's not a pickup. It's a small utility, it's like a small utility trailer truck. It's very small. I can see that being something you would use in the inner city, buzzing around, doing small, little inner-city jobs.
That's where it's gonna be.
But a pickup didn't do that. What I'm saying is it's not really replacing a pickup. Because that's not a small.
Mr. Reed, what would be the cost of a pickup? Combustion engine pickup?
$40, $45,000.
So I think the initiative would be to embark on a new wave, which is electric vehicles, and for our internal city use, would you feel that this would do the job?
Am I saying that this pickup would replace our fleet with all our vehicles? No.
No.
We have one tons that have sanders and plows and different things, but for some applications, we could probably use up to three or four of these, just to get people around to do irrigation, or if they're going to the cemetery for the day to do stuff, you know, some one-off, some washing, cleaning. All these are currently done with pickups, which we don't really need that size or capacity of pickup to do.
Great. Good answer.
So it is a viable offset for getting another pickup. This would do the job and would be a lot less costly.
But what, what would the $45,000 pay for the dump? Are you gonna get the dump one? Or are you gonna get, like, which, what do you want me to get, or just a flatbed?
The $45,000 should allot us enough to get some upgrades with the bigger tires, the extended range, the dump box. There are some limitations. We won't get the service body with the side lift or different things, but that's not what we're looking for. We just put those in there so that you see that there were different configurations and styles.
I have one question before Counselor Crook wants to talk, because he's anxious to get one here. Has there been any establishment of the expectancy, of the life expectancy of one of these vehicles? Because they are relatively new. Has there been any research done on that?
Yes, Daniel did some research about the longevity of them, and they're, they're pretty good. They've been in service for probably 10 years, have thousands and thousands of hours.
So it's got a lifetime worth?
But the fuel savings is substantial, because we have the big pickups probably getting, you know, 15, if that, around town, so.
So I want to ask you. Counselor Crook?
Yeah, I wanted to, because it hadn't been mentioned up to this point, so Mr. Reed just did, the fuel savings offset that, and we're saying to replace a pickup truck, but it's not pickup truck versus electric truck. Standard that we've always done is, we need a vehicle, so we'll buy a pickup, because it's versatile, right? It can be, well, this is even more versatile, and we're not, we have vehicles that we can take on the highway if we want. But I see this as, as part of an ongoing upgrade to city vehicles that are used within city limits, basically. So, you know, costs are pretty close, but the value that you'd get with, with one of these is more than you would get. And when we talk about things quality and how long they last and stuff, talk to anybody who owns one of the big, major three, and you can buy a brand-new Ford tomorrow, and it could be a piece of stuff.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. And plus, we're embarking, as Counselor Crook said, onto a new wave, and as time goes on, the prices will come down on these vehicles as technology advances. So I mean, I think it's a great move for the city to be looking in that direction. Counselor Butler?
Yeah, when this came forward last year, there was a lot of chatter on Facebook about the city buying a vehicle, and from what I heard in the public, they weren't really supportive. They were more supportive of a submarine, I think was the, the idea that was tossed around. So I mean, I'm here to represent what the public wants, and I just did a quick little adding up here of the budget amendments in this agenda, and it's around $75,000 extra in the budget, even though we've deferred one to a future meeting. That's not including the money that's spent in camera today, so there's a lot of money being amended here on our agenda, and we've just gotta say no to some of these. I mean, I'd like to have a cute little electric vehicle as well, but, you know, it's just not something we can afford at the moment. You know, we've, we've had a huge tax increase already, and now this is gonna incur more costs for taxpayers in our city. I just, I can't support it, I'm sorry.
Counselor Crook? Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, just, I'll try the quick with it. I will support it. I did see and follow the public.
The submarine.
So all six of them that were discussing whether we should have a submarine instead of electric vehicle, but the common thread was they were saying it was a waste of money. It was, so you've got, you need a vehicle, right? And outside of the submarine, this makes way more sense. And all of those people that were complaining, all six of them, I think it was six.
There was a few more than six, Counselor.
No. But the, you're probably not even gonna have that same, same thread or comment with a vehicle like this.
Or Counselor Thompson, I mean, just in toject here, I have a quick question which I didn't mention. Unless I'm wrong about this, but I'm almost sure that there are much less moving parts on this. In other words, we don't have a combustion engine. So obviously, there must be much less maintenance on a vehicle like this also, which in turn will cost less to repair. Should that warranty run out? Am I correct?
Yes, from, from some of the conversations that we've had at the meetings.
No oil changes, no fuel filters, no oil filters. Counselor Thompson?
The implication that I got from Counselor Butler's comment was that these rate increases were gonna be coming out of taxation, or these increases in purchasing would be coming out of taxation, they're coming out of reserves. And I think an electric vehicle over time is gonna pay for itself, in the reduction of the maintenance and the gas and the carbon footprint and all of the other things that go along with this. And I think it's an excellent idea, and it's certainly one that I'm going to be supporting.
To our CEO, Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, just like to point out, one thing on council's reports, in council's strategic priorities, there's four key pillars. This hits all four. This hits all four of council's strategic priorities, as council set out in their strategic plan. So again, it is under community livability, community engagement, fiscal accountability, and I can't read the last one in there, but.
Community.
Economic growth. And it fits under all those elements, just due to the fact that we're talking about becoming more progressive and more green, and we're trying, we're always trying to match council's strategic priorities when we're bringing these priorities forward. So again, I just wanted to put that out there for council to consider as well.
And also by going this route, it shows great initiative of staff and ingenuity that we're trying to move forward with the new wave, carbon footprint, et cetera. So I think it's great. Counselor Ross?
Seeing this is made in Parksville, and how many, how many are out there? And if we do have any problems with it, how do we get it serviced when it's just made in Parksville? Like, there's not a lot of electric car technician mechanics here. So how many are out there, and how do we have it serviced? Because I don't know what mechanics.
Is that older than a pickup?
You bought, what is it?
My pickup that drives 100 kilometers an hour.
You float it to Parksville. No, really?
No, but seriously?
Yeah.
I can ask Mr. Drexler there if he has a better answer for that, because we know there's quite a few out there in neighboring, neighboring communities.
Well, Montreal, that's one I see, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is about 100 to 120 out in, within Canada right now. I spoke with the owner of the company here a couple, a couple weeks back when I was preparing the report. The longest truck that's been out there, he had built over 10 years ago. It was along the island, so the salt wasn't too good on it, on the body, and but the farmer bought it, restored the body, and is using it on his farm daily. Yeah, so there's 120 of these units out there throughout Canada. And, yeah, in general, it's built, a lot of it is built with standard available parts. So the lights, the batteries that power it, aren't any specific batteries that are built. Our mechanic can easily repair those.
Is this the same vehicle, I'm trying to recall now from memory, and that's not very that good of mine, but is this the same vehicle that was on, I believe was Shaw's marketplace about three or four years ago, where they were, it was a, on the coast company that was building electric vehicles?
I'm not certain on that one. I, like I say, I spoke with the owner here a couple, but they've been in business now for 10 years, they're in Parksville on the island. So last year, they shipped three units. They just recently shipped over to the east coast. They put on the upgraded package. So by default, this can handle, the standard truck can handle 1,500 pounds. They put on the upgraded package, so by, by default, this can handle, the, the standard truck can handle fifteen hundred pounds ton capacity, so the same as a pickup truck. The upgraded package can do up to thirty-five hundred. So they've put on bigger tire on this upgraded package for the east coast and...
At that time, that their marketing strategy was their exports were their biggest seller, rather than even locally. I believe that was with the, the same, I'm sure it's the same companies, they were exporting more of them than they were...
It might be, I know of the hundred and twenty and a half, so.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna call it question. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Counselor Butler. So carry. To our information, it is from Public Works Association in B.C. Subject matter is letter regarding seeking support to recognize and promote acknowledgement of National Public Works Week on May the fifteenth to the twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen, and I guess coincides with our Public Works Day.
Mr. Mayor, we don't generally do proclamations for Counsel's perspective, but we do, Counsel did ask, and it was an initiative that Counsel requested that we do is to engage with our public work staff and provide the open hubs for our public, and it was a great initiative, and it's been, one's been more received with our staff. You know, we wanted to do it during that Public Works Week, so we were trying to align it with the initiatives that may be happening, so we could parallel any advertisement that'd be happening in other communities, so community members are looking at that. So, the manager of operations has put together a great program that's gonna involve the RCMP, the fire department, ambulance services, and our public work staff for the ability for community members to go in and see the vehicles and, and students and whatnot, to go down and see the stuff that we all offer in the community for the services on the outside work, so.
And that was discussed last year, I believe, we already discussed this idea, but it was too late in the year to have it, so, great.
I would move that we just receive this information.
Yeah. And send the letter to our local Public Works Department, recognize it. Go ahead, move. Okay, that's secondary. Counselor Croft, all in favor? So carry. The next subject matter is from the Good Sam Club, and it's a letter invitation to Mayor Connor regarding attending the opening ceremonies and extended invitation for a complimentary banquet on June twenty-fifth. Recommendation is received for information, and Mayor Connor advises that he plans to speak at the opening ceremonies and further attend the banquet. Yes, I will be. So may I have a mover on that, please? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Butler, all in favor? So carry. Our next item is the Grand Forks International Baseball Tournament Society. The subject matter requesting permission to sell liquor at James Donaldson Park during the two thousand and sixteen GFI baseball tournament from June twenty-eighth to July third, two thousand and sixteen, and the recommendation is Counsel approves the issuing of a special occasion liquor license to the Grand Forks International for their two thousand and sixteen baseball tournament from June twenty-eighth to July the third at James Donaldson Park from eleven to eleven, subject to the Grand Forks International obtaining third-party party alcohol liability insurance, naming the city of Grand Forks as an additional insured on that policy, also that all Grand Forks International liquor providers to hold a serving and right license certificate, and that ICBC drinking and driving warning posters be displayed. May I have a mover on that, please? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Croft, any discussion? All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. On to our next item, which is Elections B.C. Subject matter: Appointment of a Staff Member to Act as the Designated Local Authority Officer. And the recommendation is Counsel determines to appoint the Chief Election Officer, Ms. Diane Heinrich, as the designated local authority officer for the two thousand and sixteen local government and by-election process. May I have a mover on that, please? Counselor Ross, a second, or Counselor Thompson? Discussion, Counselor Butler?
I did read the report, but I was just wondering if I could get a quick explanation of what this position entails.
Your worship, with regard to the new LECA that came out in two thousand and fourteen, it's a requirement that they have, so if there's something that maybe doesn't meet the advertising requirements per se, that they have somebody that's a local authority that they can actually go to to expedite some rules. And so they never really said anything about them in the two thousand and fourteen one, but they, they told us that this is on now, and so just to keep in compliance, that's, that's...
So do I have a go with you personally, so?
Exactly.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Moving on to the Grand Forks ATV Club. Subject matter is Request for Support or Funding Application for Partnership with Columbia Western Trail Society. The recommendation is that Counsel receives the request for support of funding application for the partnership with the Columbia Western Trail Society from the Grand Forks ATV Club for discussion and decision. May I have a mover?
Move up for discussion.
Counselor Thompson, Counselor Butler, Counselor Thompson for discussion.
They are only asking for support, they're not asking for money?
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, as part of the, the, the services that we offer in the community, Counsel did the, what's the name of that policy?
The Community Support Policy, it's a little longer name, but it's, we talked about the support pieces.
Yeah, so, so what we, what we did was, before Counsel left, and we have the ability to provide support, but we have to, without a Counsel resolution, just a, a letter of support, but the, the challenge with this is, is it support? Or is it support? Like, what are we talking about when we're defining support? So one of the things we'd like to do is make sure that we're clear of, that this is just simply, we're saying that we support you in your initiative, but we don't know the crux of what you're really talking about at this point yet, so we don't wanna commit anything outside of the moral support, so to speak.
Yeah, this is similar to that of your EKB table, very similar. They will give a letter of support, but they will not embark on actually supporting the endeavor.
Yeah.
So nobody involved.
Or in kind.
Yeah.
Or in my, exactly. Okay, so I call the question. Maybe, I don't know, if this should be worded differently, a letter of support.
We would provide a letter of support, yes.
I was wondering what the motion, concerning with the word, request for support of funding application.
We'll, we'll, we'll do it in accordance to Counsel policy. Provide a letter in accordance to Counsel policy.
Okay, so that, read the resolution then.
Out. Then you want to...
May I have a resolution read after this?
Yes.
I'm just, your worship, I'm just framing it together here.
Yeah, I would, I would feel more comfortable if you agreed a request of a letter of support for the funding application.
It's in accordance with our policy. Your worship resolved that Counsel receives the request for support of funding application for partnership with the Columbia Western Trail, Trail Society from the Grand Forks ATV Club for discussion and decision, and further determines that staff provide a letter of support in principle for the organization.
We'll do it in accordance to policy, Ms. Mayor, so if it won't fall outside of policy, okay.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Our next item is the Boundary Museum Society, the invitation to the AGM on Saturday, May the fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, from one to three P.M., and the recommendation is that Counsel receives the invitation for the AGM on May the fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, from the Boundary Museum Society for discussion and decision. May I have a mover on that, please? Counselor Thompson, and the second, or Counselor Croft? In that letter, there was a statement made that they were requesting to have a liaison from the city. May I just put forward that I recommend to Counsel that we do not appoint a liaison to the museum society only for the reason that they have made a commitment under resolution to present themselves quarterly. Secondly, it would set a bad precedent, because we also do not have a liaison to Gallery Two. No, we don't.
We don't?
Do not have a liaison. I will, I am only being present at their meetings as an observer, but we do not have a direct liaison. So keeping within our format of not having liaisons to any funding organizations that we are funding, I would recommend that we continue that procedure and go on from there. So may I have a motion to receive, unless there's any discussion, the invitation? We do, I think we did, so I'll call the question. All in favor? So carry.
I will try and attend that as an observer.
It's got great desserts.
I know.
I saw that.
I'll try to go.
Yeah, they didn't ask for an actual motion that we would appoint a liaison, but any actual letter of invitation stated in there. So just so that Counsel is aware, we will not be providing a liaison there. Moving on to bylaws from our Chief Financial Officer. The subject matter is a Tax Sale Properties Reserve Fund Amendment. The recommendation is Counsel gives final reading to the sale of tax sale property monies amendment bylaw four nineteen dash A one, two thousand and sixteen. May I have a mover on that, please? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Butler, any discussion? Questions? All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Again, our Chief Financial Officer. Subject matter: Capital Reserve Fund Amendment Bylaw. The Counsel gives final reading to Capital Reserve Fund Amendment Bylaw eighteen fifty-four dash A one, two thousand and sixteen. May I have a mover on that, please? Counselor Thompson, a second, or Counselor Croft? All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. To our Manager of Development Engineering, subject matter: To amend the current Sustainable Community Plan, SCP, bylaw by adding a policy statement for temporary use permits. The recommendation is that we give it first and second reading to the City of Grand Forks Sustainable Community Amendment Bylaw number nineteen nineteen dash A one, two thousand and sixteen, and proceed with the statutory requirements for amending bylaws in accordance with the Local Government Act. May I have a mover on that, please? Counselor Butler, a second, or Counselor Croft? Discussion, Counselor Butler.
I'm just curious, Mr. Mayor, for you to stop, how did we deal with temporary use permits in the past?
Manager of Development Engineering?
They are restricted to only certain zones, and so what we're saying now is that we would like to allow Counsel to make the decisions on a case-by-case basis in all zones.
Any other questions or concern? All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Chief Financial Officer, subject matter: Slag Sales Reserve Fund Repeal and New Bylaw. The recommendation is Counsel gives final reading to the City of Grand Forks Slag Sale Reserve Fund nineteen seventy-seven repeal bylaw number thousand and five dash R, two thousand and sixteen, and further that Counsel gives final reading to the Slag Sale Reserve Fund Bylaw twenty twenty-seven, two thousand and sixteen. May I have a mover? This is Counsel Thompson, a second, or Counselor Croft? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Counselor Butler is opposed. Motion is carried. Where is Counsel Hammond?
She doesn't, she doesn't know.
Oh, okay. Chief Financial Officer, subject matter is the new Capital Reserves Bylaw. Recommendation is Counsel gives final reading to the Capital Reserve Funds Establishment Bylaw twenty twenty-eight, two thousand and sixteen. A mover, please? Counselor Thompson, a second.
Doesn't it?
Second. I refuse to second that.
Why?
Because my arms got tired. Counselor Croft?
You got her arm.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Now we're... So carry. To our Financial Officer, Chief Financial Officer, again, subject matter is Land Sales Reserve Repeal Old Bylaw and Adopt a New Bylaw. Recommendation is Counsel gives final reading to the Land Sales Reserve Fund nineteen ninety-nine repeal bylaw number sixteen oh nine dash R, two thousand and sixteen, and further that Counsel gives final reading to Land Sales Reserve Fund Bylaw twenty twenty-nine, two thousand and sixteen. A mover, please? Counselor Thompson, a second. Okay, I'll second. Counselor Croft, all in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry.
Can I just have a, put a, a chair? Can I just quickly, my, and check on Counsel, please? I'll go. Can I just do that?
Yeah. I'll call a brief recess for... I'd like to call this meeting back to order. All right. And our Chief Financial Officer, Fire Truck Parcel Tax Preparation Bylaw twenty thirty, Fire Truck Parcel Tax Imposition Bylaw twenty thirty-one. Recommendation is Counsel gives final reading to the Fire Truck Parcel Tax Rule Preparation Bylaw twenty thirty, two thousand and sixteen, and further that Counsel gives final reading to the Fire Truck Parcel Tax Rule Imposition Bylaw twenty thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen. May I, may I have a mover on that? Counselor Thompson? Not again. A second, there, please? Counselor Ross? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Counselor Butler is opposed. Motion is carried. Our Chief Financial Officer, the subject matter is the two thousand and sixteen Tax Rates Bylaw twenty thirty-two. The recommendation is that Counsel gives final reading to the twenty sixteen Tax Rates Bylaw twenty thirty-two. Counselor Thompson, a second, or Counselor Croft? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Counselor Butler. Motion is carried. I believe we had a late item.
You had the, the financial statements were, were...
Yeah.
They were... The, there's a signed financial statements now. Do we need to move to, was that the late item today?
But they were, they were handed out, and so I think we're good.
Yeah, I think we discussed them already.
We just had to have the attachment.
We had done the attachment, because we didn't have until after the...
Okay, so we have no late items. So the next...
Can I just ask Garcia a whole question, please?
Sure, go ahead, Counsel Thompson.
Is this it for bylaws from finance for a while?
I promise. Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to the questions from the public and the media, and may I caution everyone that the content of the conversations and the discussions have to be based on the subject matter of this evening's agenda. So, anyone has any questions? Go ahead to the lady in the front row.
Domlet from the Gazette, the Johnson Spots wet miles, is that where you sweep down and go through those two S corners?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
And behind the cemetery.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? To the gentleman in the back?
Just a comment that Counselor Butler had said about...
Identification.
Last year on the GFTV, Counselor Butler had mentioned, and this was a topic of discussion last year when we were talking about the community and water, and it came up, that people were suggesting that a nice green, lush lawn would help to be a fire protection, fire break protection in the case of a wildfire hitting a town, and I was looking at those pictures from Fort Mac, the after-stuff yesterday, and I noticed in some of the residential areas, burned-out house, burned-out house, burned-out house, Greensward, more burned-out houses. And I was talking to the fire chief about a topic of conversation regarding putting up a fire break in Castlegar. He said, "Well, yeah, you, you would need a four-kilometer fire break, because it's spotting two and a half kilometers ahead." And he also talked about a Rock Creek fire that they had to fight, where they were literally standing in water, and it was burning off the tops of the bull rushes that were standing in water, so it's kind of a, not really a fire break. And this wasn't on tonight's agenda, but this was on the earlier meeting. I'm looking at the nineteen-ten Gazette, and the council meeting there, they're talking about stepping hard on people with unsightly premises. They're saying that water restrictions for sprinkling are from eight A.M. to nine P.M. And here in another section, it goes, "Residents of this district are reminded that Provincial Fire Protection Act came into effect on the first of May. Under this act, it's necessary for ranchers and others outside incorporated towns and cities to procure from the district fire warden a permit to burn off their land or start a fire. Without a permit are subject to a fine or imprisonment or both." I mean, not much has changed in terms of what you guys are facing and to deal with. It's a hundred and six years later. That's just my point.
Counselor Butler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, in response to the President's response. What I was quoting from was a quote from the fire chief in the Okanagan with regards to the Rock Creek fire and the green properties in Rock Creek that survived the fire, and that was the instance that I was referring to, not the fire chief in Fort McMurray.
Okay. Any other questions? To the gentleman in the second row?
Yes, pursuant to Counselor Butler's report, I just would like to make a comment on
Identification, please.
Tom Tripp, Grand Forks, campaign manager, possible future Counselor, that trip. We don't have.
Yes. Yeah, I would not recommend you make statements like that, please.
I said possible, but yes, I respect that. Counselor Butler spoke.
You'll have to do it out on the street.
Yes, I agree. Thank you. Counselor Butler's report talked about Craig Lindsey's dismissal, and, um, I'm just concerned about the perception of potential heavy-handedness, uh, between the city and the Gazette.
We are now discussing names, which is human resources issue and it's also a personal issue, so I would not recommend, nothing to do with us, but it's not in our, it's not in our domain to be discussing with that.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? To the gentleman in the second row?
I'm Jim. In regard to the electric vehicle, Counselor Ross, Don, when he said he was a very small electric truck, I saw, he was in town about four years ago, was here at the credit union of the truck. How much use are you gonna get out of it? And if vehicle, as vehicles, like, you need to be replaced, a far, I shouldn't use the word far, but a more economical concept would be to go back to propane, which the carbon footprint is minimal, considerable less than natural gas. And, um, overall, the life of, overall, the life of the vehicle, the actual cost of the fuel to run the vehicle is the smallest part. The maintenance costs on the vehicle, the tires and brakes, all the other stuff, if you average it over eight or ten years, is, is more costly than electricity. Right now, they get about three miles on, like, on the, um, full-size electric cars, they get about three miles per kilowatt. So if you convert that into gas prices, depending, again, which area you're in, but they're at a maximum, they're getting up to eighty miles to gallon, per gallon, if it was gas. In our country, if you, you're probably get, like, if you bought a new Tesla, in, in Canada, at our rates, you're probably getting forty-five, fifty miles to the gallon. So, you know, electricity is an amazing product, I don't disagree at all, but right now, it's, for what you get out of it over the life of the vehicle, it's still very expensive. And I agree with you, you're absolutely right. As the electric vehicles come along, the, the prices are continuing to go down. Tesla's coming up with a thirty thousand dollar car, and this M leaf is getting, has further, uh, travel miles based on the batteries, on lithium ion batteries. For what it's worth, this little truck, last I know, it ran, still ran on deep cycle lead acid batteries, which over the life cycle of recharging are far less than they are on lithium ion. So, I know it's a great toy, I believe that, and I agree with Counselor Ross, but the actual functionality of it to run around town with this, that, or the other, it's not gonna replace a pickup truck. I'm amazed to hear that its capacity is thirty-five hundred pounds. That's, you're talking in the range of a three-quarter ton truck, and, uh, I don't believe this little guy can haul that kind of weight. If it can't go on the highway, you'd watch yourself a really limited vehicle, so it'd have been far better off in a basic Chevy, spent three thousand dollars and converted it to propane, and the life on propane engines, vehicles run far longer than they do on regular fuel, so. I know the company that worked four years ago converted every vehicle they had to be around that for about twelve years, and the maintenance on the engines and the money was, I would suggest, less than half of what it would have been on gasoline, so everything lasts longer, so probably not the best decision in the world, but it's not an expensive decision.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? So without further ado, may I have a motion to adjourn? Counselor Butler? Counselor Thompson? All in favor? So carried.